Gentlemen, may I remove their jackets?
Yes, ladies and gentlemen, as we've now announced at the last couple of meetings, the meeting this evening is going to be recorded, but this time it's not solely for training purposes, this meeting is actually going to be broadcast, so I would ask everybody to be aware of that and to remember that the cameras will be recording you. It's going to be recorded for a broadcast tomorrow morning via the Authority's webcasting system, and there will be an archive record of the meeting kept. You should also be aware that images and sound recording may also be used for training purposes, and I should explain at this point that the public seating areas will also be in view of the camera, and that by entering the chamber and using the public seating area, members of the public are consenting to being filmed, and those images appearing on the Authority's internet site and in the archive record of the meeting. I should also remind everybody that the Chair has discretion to terminate or suspend filming if, in his opinion, at any time continuing to do so would prejudice the proceedings, or that continued filming might infringe the rights of any individual. With regard to procedure, can I please remind everybody that if they wish to speak at any time, you need to indicate, and you can only speak through the Chair. We aren't in a position where people can just contribute by overriding the microphone, there is a system whereby the microphones work, and you will need to indicate to the Chair when you need to speak, and you will be called by him. And finally, can I ask everybody to turn mobile phones and any sort of receiving device off, please? Even if you turn it on to silence, the vibrating will affect the microphones, so can I please ask that everybody turns their phones off? Thank you.
Good evening, councillors, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the council meeting of the 8th of Wednesday, the 8th of October. Item number one is apologies.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we've had apologies from councillor Paul Brown and councillor Leighton Smart.
Councillor Thomas.
Councillor Howard Barrett. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councillor Lisa Mitten apologises, she's stuck in traffic on the A470, is likely to be a little late, but will be here.
Right, item number two, declarations of interest. I remind members of number two, 2A and 2B. Councillor Gallsworthy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to declare an interest in agenda item 20, the Leisure and Culture Trust, as I'm the councillor representative on the trust. But as I understand it, I am allowed to remain in the meeting.
That's correct, because you do have a dispensation as the local authority representative.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to do the same, declare interest on item 20, I'm the councillor rep on the leisure trust.
Declarations of interest, right, we go into a presentation now by Anna Morgan of the Welsh Local Government Association on equalities update.
Thank you, Mayor. Would it be better if I stood up, or would you rather I sat down?
No, can you sit?
Sit down, okay, yeah, yeah, that's fine. Thanks very much for inviting me here, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for introducing me. I'm Anna Morgan from the Welsh Local Government Association, and I'm going to spend about 20 minutes, really, just giving you as a full council, an update in relation to the Equalities Act 2010. And I'll start it off by titling it, as you can see on the screens that you've got there, that you are the champions, and I'm hoping by the time that we finish in the next 20 minutes or so, that you will appreciate what I mean in terms of that particular role as an elected representative here at Merthyr Tydfil County Borough Council. And basically, I'm going to cover just a reminder, because I've met most of you over the past few years, and we've had conversations in relation to the Equality Act, so forgive me, but I'm going to assume that you know the basics in relation to that, I'm just going to remind you of the public sector duty here in Wales. Very briefly, just to remind you about who or what are the protected characteristics in terms of people that we're protecting from discrimination, victimisation and harassment, what are those specific duties in Wales, and then what is the role of a member champion in terms of equalities in the Equalities Act of 2010? And I've just come to suggest to you some support that's available to you, should you decide as an individual or as a local authority, as a council, that you would like to progress with some of this stuff. I'm happy to take any questions and answers at the end, if that's okay, Mr. Mayor, which is take about 20 minutes just to go through this, and if you've got any questions for me, I'm happy to take those at the end. So the public sector duty that came in as a result of the Equality Act of 2010, I'm sure you'll all be aware, but just in case, well, like me, you'll have slept since we last met, the public sector equality duty places an individual responsibility on the shoulders of every elected representative here in Wales to undertake due regard to the need to eliminate any unlawful discrimination, harassment and victimisation. As a representative, you have to pay due regard to advancing equality of opportunity, and you also have to pay due regard to fostering good relations. All three of those things is roles and responsibilities of any elected representative that is serving across the UK, actually, not just in Wales. It's a UK-wide piece of legislation. It does cover both employment and public services, and also public functions, so things like, for example, prison service would be seen as a public function. So those three elements there are critically important to you in terms of you undertaking your role as a councillor for Merthyr Tydfil County Borough Council. Who is protected? I'm not going to go into all of these in as much detail as I would if I was doing a training session, because obviously time is limited, and you've got quite a big agenda to get through, but you'll see there a list of all of the people, or all of the characteristics that are protected within the legislation. So when you look at the public sector equality duty, as councillors, you do have a responsibility to do those three things on the previous slide in relation to people's race, skin colour, colour, culture, ethnic origin, nationality, those people who are Romanic gypsies or Irish travellers, those people who are Sikhs or Jews, all of those people are protected in terms of their race under this piece of legislation. Men and women are also protected in terms of their sex or gender, disabled people, people with an impairment, you know, a lifelong illness, anything that comes within that definition, not just physical access, but those things in terms of sensory loss, mental health conditions, et cetera. People are protected on the grounds of their age, and of course, an age you'll know, we're living in an aging population, which obviously has implications for the public sector. People are also protected on the grounds of their religion or their belief. People are protected on the grounds of their sexual orientation, so if you're gay, lesbian, bisexual or heterosexual, you are protected, and as elected representatives, we have a role, or you have a role, I'm not an elected representative but work for the public sector, the same thing applies to me, to comply with that general duty. People on the grounds of their gender reassignment are also a protected characteristic, as are the last two, marriage and civil partnership, and people's pregnancy and maternity status. And all of us will have one or more, well, more than one undoubtedly, of those protected characteristics, so the legislation actually protects everybody from any of those things happening in terms of the public sector duty. You might ask me about Welsh language, it's not included in this piece of legislation, but as an organisation, from the Welsh standards issued by Welsh Government, you will be working towards providing services on a fair and equal basis in terms of language requirements with Welsh and English, so I will just highlight that. In Wales, you'll know that we have some specific duties here, they don't have the specific duties over the border in England, but in Wales, Welsh Government have set all of these bullet points here as legal requirements for you as an organisation to comply with. And the idea behind that is to help and support you to deliver on the general equality duty of those three particular issues. Engagement, particularly for you as elected representatives, is a legal requirement, and we have to be engaging with all members of the community, not just those who were voted for you, for example, but everybody that you represent across your whole ward area. So I'd encourage you to remember that. One of the others, it's probably, possibly, I can't think of the word now, but it's probably one of the highest risk areas here, particularly with the decisions that are being taken by local authorities, particularly in light of the budget situation, is a local authority has to assess the decisions that they're making as an organisation against what's the likely equality impact. And some work has been done here in this local authority on that particular issue, and that in itself could be a whole day's training session, and not really for today. But in terms of what is an equality impact assessment, particularly around the conversations that are happening around budgets, it is a systematic way of finding out whether the impact of that decision is likely to have on protected characteristics, those people who have historically been disproportionately affected, that are listed as protected characteristics under the Equality Act. And there's a lengthier definition there, which you'll have copies of the presentation, you'll be able to read it. Fundamentally, it's about making sure that the services that you deliver are excellent quality employment and public services for everybody that lives within the area of Merthyr Tydfil, and is able to access those services according to what their needs are. In terms of all of you, you are all, in your own right, as elected representatives, champions in terms of this particular area. We do have, obviously, in local government, and you do have in Merthyr Tydfil, particular champions for particular issues, so you'll have an older person's champion here, you'll have an equality champion here, you will be or should have in place a diversity champion here, maybe a children's champion, a whole variety of champions. I just want to talk to you quickly about the member equality champion's role, and it's not just the role of that one individual who has that title, it is actually what you all have in terms of the public sector duty that's been placed upon you by nature of the role that you undertake. But the purpose of that role is to raise the profile of equality within the local authority, but also within the local community. There are issues here around community cohesion and the fostering of good relations, you play a pivotal role in the success of that happening in terms of good community cohesion. The purpose of the champion is also to represent and promote the needs of those people who have a protected characteristic, and you will know some of those that live within the ward area that you represent, you may not know them all. And it is also about you helping achieve equality improvement and help the local authority to make sure that it is compliant with this piece of legislation. You are the face of a local authority, you are put in a position of extreme power, I think, by those people who have represented you into the positions that you're in, and you have the potential to add to the successes that you've already made. What are the benefits? Well, there are a number of benefits, there are a number of individual benefits for all of you in terms of this particular area of equality. As individuals, you'll have an increased knowledge and understanding of all the equality issues, the broader issues, some of us have more knowledge and understanding of some protected characteristics, depending on what has affected us, we may not know what we don't know. Broadened skills and expertise as an elected representative, looking across those protected characteristics, and insight into issues facing individuals and communities, those with specific protected characteristics can be quite a fascinating increase in terms of insight into people who are different. And also, an increased potential as a councillor to have an even greater positive impact to that that you're already having. That's the benefits for you, there are benefits, obviously, to the local authority. The local authority would have identical people, the members, officers and people living within the community that they can approach on these issues, it would be a way for the organisation to demonstrate the organisation's commitment to equality, and that's very important. It is a way of you providing a voice for people who quite often are seldom heard, sometimes they're described as hard-to-reach groups, but there are arguments that sometimes that local authorities can actually be hard to reach in themselves, particularly for some of these groups who have protected characteristics. And for the local authority, it's providing the necessary challenge for you to support improvement and to meet the statutory requirements that are laid out in the Equality Act of 2010. So there are some significant benefits here to you as individuals, significant benefits to the local authority, but as importantly, there are significant benefits for the people that live within the communities of Merthyr Tydfil. They have an identifiable person or people that they can contact, somebody that they can trust, somebody that will represent and speak up for them or their communities. It provides for them effective and ongoing engagement between those groups of people or individuals and the local authority, and ultimately should provide for them services that actually meet their needs, where sometimes that may not have happened before. So there are benefits in three different ways here, in terms of you championing the issues around equality, which is also a statutory requirement if you enter the legislation. So, for example, here, just quickly, an equality champion receives a number of complaints from black and minority ethnic residents regarding the council's communication via phone, letter and email, and the lack of languages other than the English that are offered. The consequence of this is that many residents are not accessing the services that they need. Equality champion, or the elected representative, raises this as a corporate issue, and look at the power within this in terms of the outcome. The communication team, in partnership with the equality team or officer that is here at Merthyr, look into how the organisation communicates and identify accessible communication as an area for improvement. They speak to communities about how their communication could be improved, they undertake awareness raising for staff across the organisation on accessible communication, and ensure that alternatives are offered wherever they're required, just by raising one simple issue that can have a great impact on people across the whole community. So just as an example. One of the things we can offer at the WLGA is a member development programme that is specifically aimed at elected representatives across Wales, and it does say it's the Equality Champions Programme, but we've piloted this programme, and we've piloted it with people who have an interest in equalities, certainly quite a number of scrutiny chairs have undertaken this programme, and it isn't one of those traditional, dare I say, local government death-by-powerpoint sessions. We run a programme that runs six sessions, never more than two, two and a half hours maximum in terms of time. It does include videos, real-life case studies, it does involve sessions where we bring in members of the community that have particular issues around protected characteristics, it does involve some media training, and it involves an immense amount of humour, which isn't always associated with this agenda, but I will say it's always appropriate humour. I've just come into the end of a programme with one of our South Wales local authorities, where recently they had some very interesting insight into what's it like to be somebody who reassigns their gender living in South Wales, not a conversation as elected representatives that they'd ever had with somebody who needed to reassign their gender, so it was a really beneficial conversation for all those people involved. It is something, you know, that we can arrange, depending on the needs of the local authority, should you be interested in investigating that in a bit more detail. Just to give you some idea of what some people have said about that, and in fact, one of your councillors, two, three years ago, came on that particular pilot programme, unfortunately isn't a representative anymore, but nonetheless had a lot to gain and a lot to contribute to the actual programme itself. And I've got three quotes here that I'd like to just leave you with in terms of the outcome, which was quite significant. One of the participants, and there were a group of 12 of them, said it was a very thought-provoking programme, and would recommend, sorry, recommend and endorse rollout across Wales, a really well-planned and put-together programme, wholly appropriate and relevant to the needs of an elected member in the 21st century local government, and it should be mandatory for all councillors to attend. I should point out that this is the only programme of its like across the UK, we haven't found one like across the border in England, so it's quite unique. One of the other participants had said, as a result of the programme, the challenge had been helping officers and members alike to understand, appreciate and see the importance of considering equality impacts on everything that we do as a council, challenging the, this is the way we do and have always done things around here, this councillor found the programme helpful in terms of challenging those issues. And finally, for one of the participants, they'd said that the programme had had a, because it is a big commitment, six sessions over a period of about six months, a positive impact, and made them determined to challenge, bring about change in culture at their local authority, and help officers and members understand the importance, value and worth of equality. Your role as elected representatives is to represent the views of all of those people that live and visit, or whatever it might be, your ward, like I say, not just those that might have voted for you. And I would encourage you to consider that, particularly under the public sector equality duty, and the whole raft of protected characteristics that are contained within the legislation. So, there are hyperlinks here, if there's, there's a lot more resources we can provide you with, there's just some here that you might be interested in clicking on when this becomes available to you electronically. If there's any other support, obviously, that we can provide you with, we'd be more than happy to come back if anything arises from this particular session. So bang on, 20 minutes, or thereabouts. In summary, a quick refresher of the public sector equality duty, please bear that in mind in everything that you do, in the 24 hours a day, seven days a week, that you work as an elected representative, particularly around issues around social media as well, you are in the public domain and have a responsibility in relation to that. Remember, all of those protected characteristics are protected in relation to that. There are specific duties here in Wales that we have to comply with in terms of legislation. As elected representatives, you have a role as elected member equality champions, and there is some available support there for you, which obviously the Welsh Local Government Association would be delighted to help you with, should you want any. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Anna. Any questions? No questions? Councillor Toomey?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. If there are no questions, Mr. Mayor, I'll sum up, is that okay? Okay, well, Anna, can I just first of all thank you for your presentation to council this evening? It was extremely interesting, and indeed, in many respects, quite enlightening in terms of our responsibilities as elected councillors. I think it's fair to say that as members of this authority, we all want to ensure that we comply with the Act of 2010, not simply for compliance sake, but for all the right reasons, i.e. to make sure that we are able to give good representation to the individuals and groups that are covered by the Act itself. Now, unfortunately, going back August, we lost our previous champion, not literally lost, she's still with us this evening, but had to give up certain commitments due to increased work commitments, et cetera, so we've been without the champion since August. But I'm pleased to announce this evening that another excellent member has stepped up and will make a very, very good champion in moving equalities and the equalities agenda forward, and that's councillor Gallsworthy has volunteered. If there are no other volunteers, I'm sure Ernie will do a really, really good job, so that's indeed good news. So I don't know whether that's as a result of you coming this evening, or I suspect Ernie picking up the mantle, as he usually does, and wanting to move things on. So can I, again, on behalf of the council, thanks very much for your presentation this evening, thank you.
Thank you, Anna. We normally ask our people to present to us, to stay and remain for the rest of the session, but I understand you have to go back to Puff Call because you're doing the parents' evening with your daughter, so thank you very much, and a safe journey home. Members, before we start the next session, I have to announce that we have item number 21, any urgent business, we have two items on there, so please don't rush off. We go to the minutes of the previous meeting, item number four.
Can I move the minutes, so the Wednesday, the 23rd of August, so the Licence Committee, Mr. Mayor?
Item number five? Oh, yes, yeah. Right. Is this seconded? Can we have a show of hands, please? No? Can everybody vote, please? Us all carried.
Try again. Can I move the second set of minutes of the Licence Committee of the Wednesday, the 27th of August, Mr. Mayor?
Is that a seconded? Can I call for the vote, please? Us all carried. Item number six, customer scrutiny of customer services meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move the minutes of the meeting, Monday, the 1st of September, 2014.
Seconded, right. All to vote, please? Us all carried. We go on. Is that a seconded? Ask you all to vote, please? Us all carried. Item number eight, scrutiny of schools meeting of Monday, the 8th of September.
Move, Mr. Mayor.
Can I ask you all to vote, please? Us all carried. Item number nine, scrutiny of social services and the social regeneration meeting of Tuesday, the 9th of September. Can I ask you to vote, please? Us carried, thank you very much. Item number 10, the joint negotiating and consultative group meeting of Wednesday, the 10th of September.
I move the minutes, Mr. Mayor.
Can I ask you all to vote, please? Us carried. Item number 12. Number 11. Cabinet meeting of Wednesday, the 10th of September.
Yes, I'm happy to move, Mr. Mayor.
My second, Mr. Mayor.
Can I ask you all to vote, please? All carried. Right, we go on to the agenda now, item number 12, the Merthyr Tydfil Single Integrated Plan of 2013 to 2017 revised for 2014/15. I believe councillor Williams is taking this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The purpose of the report is to seek approval of the revised Merthyr Tydfil Single Integrated Plan for 2014/15, and to report progress to date in relation to a number of the enabling strategies to support the Single Integrated Plan, otherwise known as ACIP. I won't go through the report in details, Mr. Mayor, but if I can refer members to page 28, minute number, sorry, paragraph number 2.2, which says, "As councillors are aware, the priorities identified within the County Borough Council's corporate plan reflect the priority outcomes identified in the ACIP. During the consultation on the council's priorities undertaken in October and November, the citizens of Merthyr Tydfil were shown the council's priority outcomes for 2013/14, and were asked if they agreed that each priority should remain for 2014/15. The results are in the table below, from which you will see that a vast majority supported or agreed with the priorities." The report then goes on in paragraph 3... The report then goes on, goes on in paragraph three to report on progress in relation to the enabling strategies that support the SIP and related points. And if I can now refer members to page thirty-two, paragraph four dot two, which says that the financial pressures on the public sector, welfare reforms and future budget announcements will impact on the delivery of the SIP and there will be a need to closely monitor the plan to ensure that the outcomes are still deliverable. Inevitably, each partner's contribution to delivering the priorities will need to be reviewed as a consequence of reducing resources. That is ever so true given today's announcement. So I move us to paragraph thirty-seven dot one on page thirty-two, which is a recommendation that the revised single integrated plan for fourteen fifteen be, as provided through the background papers, be approved. Subject to questions and comments, I so move.
Is there a seconded? Can I? Any questions?
It's not a question, Mr. Mayor, but I, in seconding the recommendation on page seven point one, can I also just thank Suzanne Davies and the partnership team for all the work they do on the single integrated plan on behalf of our partners on the local service board. Tremendous amount of work continues to go on with the SIP and work surrounding the single integrated plan. I'm sure the members have read the background papers, but a significant amount of work has been done tweaking the overall priorities of the single integrated plan for which I am extremely grateful.
Throw this open for debate. Any questions? Any comments? Ask you all to vote on the recommendation on page thirty-two, seven point one. Your vote, please. That's carried. Agenda item number thirteen, the annual performance report of two thousand and thirteen fourteen. And I believe councillor Williams is taking this.
Yes, indeed, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for that. And the purpose of this report is to seek approval for the annual performance report twenty thirteen fourteen. And in paragraph one dot one, it explains that the local government Wales measured two thousand and nine requires local authorities to publish our plans, which is the corporate plan, and then publish an assessment of performance relating to our plans, which is this annual performance report. Over the page on page thirty-six, paragraph two dot two, you will see that the overall position for the delivery of the priority areas in the plan are assessed as adequate, where the strengths outweigh the areas for improvement. Of the seven priority areas, two have been judged as good, three as adequate and two as unsatisfactory. Two dot three, an equality improvement peer review took place in June twenty thirteen, which was organised by WLGA and carried out by its peers. The outcome from this peer review was generally positive, recognising key strengths and opportunities for improvement within the organisation. And at paragraph two dot five, I am pleased to report that there has been significant improvement within the national strategic indicators, that's hard to say this time of night, at Merthyr Tydfil. A total of four indicators have moved position from below the Wales median and the number within the top quartile has increased by four. The impact of this improvement has been a shift in the overall NSI rank position from equal nineteenth in twenty twelve thirteen to equal ninth in twenty thirteen fourteen. Congratulations and our gratitude to all members of staff and all members of the top team as well in delivering that for this authority. So I move us to paragraph six on page thirty-seven. Recommendation six dot one, that the annual performance report for twenty thirteen fourteen be approved and paragraph six dot two, that the leader in consultation with the chief executive is given delegated powers to make necessary amendments to the annual performance report thirteen fourteen to reflect updated information when available. Subject to questions and comments, I move.
Councillor Toomey?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to second the deputy leader in the recommendations in the report. And can I just say, Mr. Mayor, that whilst the report is a backward looking report, i.e. it is looking at last year's performance, I think it is a fair assessment of where we were in two thousand and thirteen. Since that point in time, we've made significant improvements, again this year in some areas, but clearly that won't be reported until next year. And can I also, Mr. Mayor, thank Ewan McWilliams, who's sitting with us this evening for doing such a lot of work on the, on the report itself. And Ewan has also just put together a public summary, which is very easy reading, and I can commend that to all members if they haven't gone through the entire document in its entirety.
Any questions? Councillor Thomas?
Sorry, I'm trying to vote, Mr. Mayor, before, before the time is allowed. Two point two and two point five, is it possible that allowing for what might be published in the public document in due course, that we could have some detail on the seven areas, whether they were rated as good, adequate or unsatisfactory? And also to see some information on which of the strategic indicators were also moved up the scale? Mr. Mayor, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'll ask Mark Thomas to answer that one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Obviously, the detail is contained in the reports as being referred to. The areas that were unsatisfactory for last year were priority area number one, raising standards of attainment. And the other area was priority area number seven, which was sustainable environment and relates to our waste management and recycling specifically. In relation to the national strategic indicators, I'll pass over to Ewan to actually answer that particular question, since the four indicators.
Any other questions?
There was four indicators that moved up position, but I don't actually know the four, the detail behind the four and the reasons why they were there. It's something that I'd need to pick up in due course. In the background paper, the measures are all stipulated in there and there's a lot of detail at the end of the report, but I don't know if it's appropriate to run through that just now and try and pick out and respond to that question at this point in time. Is it more appropriate to pick up later on?
I'm more than happy for that to happen outside this chamber, Mr. Mayor. I just want to see the detail. I can happily read it myself then.
Any other questions? Any comments? Right, members, I'll ask you to vote, please. Agenda item number fourteen, disclosure and barring service, policy and procedure. I believe councillor Williams is taking this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yep, it is in me again. This one is a straightforward report, the purpose of which is to seek ratification of the updated disclosure and barring service, or DBS otherwise known as, policy and procedure. Interesting comment in paragraph one dot four on page thirty-nine is all employees are included in the scope and it's recommended to apply to council members as well. I believe that's probably at the standard level as opposed to the enhanced. If I can go over the page to page forty on paragraph one dot five, you will see there that the policy was taken to the joint negotiating and consultative group on the tenth of September and was agreed with the unions. And then paragraph two gives you some overview into the policy. You can see there the three levels of disclosure, basic, standard and enhanced. And the financial implications, it shows how much it costs for a disclosure to take place, which is forty-four pounds. I am advised that in the last financial year, we spent approximately sixty-nine thousand pounds on disclosure and barring. And this year to date, with the first three months of this year, we've spent somewhere around twelve and a half thousand pounds. The recommendation is on page forty-one, that the DBS policy procedure be agreed, agreed, I move.
Seconded?
Yes, I'm happy to second, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions? Any comments? Well, the recommendation is on page forty-one. All those in, can I ask you to vote, please, councillors?
Councillor Graham Davies? Thank you.
That's carried. We go on to item number fifteen, Merthyr Tydfil central bus station, a response to the petition. I believe Chris, councillor Barry, is going to take this.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, in July this year, council considered and approved the relocation of the central bus station. This was following an optional appraisal, economic impact assessment and a month-long public consultation. At the meeting, a petition was presented which was against relocation. Obviously, it wasn't considered, it was outside the timescale of the consultation period. The petitioner requested a deferral of the decision. Well, that didn't happen because we discussed it and carried the recommendation at night. Petition raised three grounds of unsuitability, related to location, trafficking, road safety issues and antisocial behaviour. They were all addressed on the original report, which we discussed and we passed. So, Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to move recommendation six point one, that the petition be noted and assured that the points raised are included as part of the design stage.
Is there a seconded? Any questions? Any comments? The recommendation is on page seventy-one, recommendation number six. Can I call for a vote, please? We go on to item number sixteen, time to change Wales mental health campaign. And I believe councillor Brent, councillor Carter is taking this.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I misled you earlier on this evening. It's rereading, it is my report because it was Dion's, was the author, so my apologies to you for misleading you. I take this report. The purpose of the report is clearly set out there and it's quite important that members will have read it. I'm sure that the report provides information on the Time to Change Wales, TTCW, which is the first national campaign to end the stigma and discrimination faced by people with mental health problems in Wales. Campaign is being led by Wales's three leading mental health charities, GORVEL, HAVL and Mindcomrie, and is funded by the Big Lottery Fund, Comic Relief and the Welsh Government. Paragraph two on page seventy-four goes into detail about what it is. It's a, it's an organisational pledge and a public declaration. And paragraph two dot two is that if we, all of those who pledge must complete an action plan. And I think the important paragraph is two dot four, where it says committing to the TTCW organisational pledge will contribute to the delivery of Welsh Government's Together for Mental Health Strategy and the council's Strategic Equality Plan, as well as contributing to reducing stigma within the workplace. The recommendation is on page seventy-five in paragraph six dot one, that the TTCW organisational pledge be agreed and a plan of action to tackle mental health stigma and discrimination in the workplace be developed. Appendix one sets out the joint pledge action plan. I move the recommendation.
Councillor Toomey?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I'm delighted to be able to second this recommendation and as an organisation, I think we should be proud to support this initiative. There is far too much stigma surrounding mental health and mental health issues and the sooner that is put to bed once and for all, the better. So as I said, Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to second the recommendation.
I have to point out, councillors, that councillor Mitten have just arrived in there and she cannot vote on this item. Right, any questions? Any comments? Councillor Davies?
I would like to speak in support of this report, as one in four of us will suffer from some form of mental illness in our lifetime, I think it's very relevant. As my role as the dementia champion, I visited the dementia care and support group in Redicard a couple of weeks ago and I met quite a group of inspiring people who care for their relatives in the most amazing ways. I was struck by, more and more struck was by the stories that were told by a few people there and how they were treated by some establishments in our community. A few were explained that they are regularly harassed by security guards when they take their partners into disabled toilets. As you may imagine, supporting a person who can be confused and have visual disturbances to use a toilet in an unfamiliar location is hard enough without a big, big burly security guard banging on the door accusing you of shoplifting. There's some really shocking figures in relation to mental illness. People who suffer from schizophrenia can have a life expectancy of ten to fifteen years below that of the population. Obviously, you can't die of schizophrenia and most statistically don't kill themselves. One of the explanations of this is they're likely to die of heart disease, strokes and cancer, and that's because, because of stigma, they are stopped using normal services which might promote an healthy lifestyle. So there's certain things that you can't control when you suffer from a mental health problem, but as a society, we should be in control of if you're able to go shopping without being harassed and you have the same level of service as everyone else. So we need to discourage the dispelling of myths and stigma about mental health. And one of the best ways of doing this is information from service users and their carers. And I plan to do everything in my power as the champion to support this.
Councillor Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Difficult to follow such an eloquent speech in terms of support for the paper. Voting for it for me is simply not enough. I think it's important that we actually verbally and publicly state our support for this. I agree with the leader, we must do it, we should do it, and the independent group is delighted to support it.
Any other questions? Any comments? Recommendation is on page seventy, recommendation on page seventy-five. I'll ask you all to vote, please. That's carried. Item number seventeen, the business continuity management policy. And I think councillor Jones is taking this.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. The purpose of the report is for council to approve the replacement of the two thousand and eleven Business Continuity Management Plan with a new version. The new policy is aligned to both British and international standards. The need for business continuity management arrangements is a statutory duty under the Civil Contingencies Act two thousand and four, whereby authorities ensure the continuation of essential services during times of severe disruption. Following the Simpson Report, Merthyr Tydfil and six other authorities in South Wales formed the South Wales Resilience Team, working together on a number of work streams, one of which is the Business Continuity Management. The outcome of that collaboration is this BCM policy toolkit and plan, which has been shared across all twenty-two authorities in Wales as best practice. Subject to any questions or comments, I move the recommendation six one and that the implementation and adoption of the new BCM policy be approved.
Have we got a seconded? Throw this open for debate? Any questions? Any comments? Right, recommendation, recommendation is on page eighty. Ask you to vote, please, councillors. Item number...
Mr. Mayor, before you take the next item, apologies, I was late for the beginning of the meeting, but I need to declare personal and prejudicial interest in this particular item. And the reason for that is I'm the minutes secretary for the Veyner Community Forum. So if that's okay with you, I'll now leave council chamber. Thank you.
Right, item number eighteen, the Biffa profit sharing scheme. I think councillor Williams is taking this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the report says, there is a request from the Veyner Electoral Division for a grant of five hundred pounds to the Veyner Community Forum. And a councillor who has just declared the interest, has an interest obviously in the organisation, it therefore falls to the council to determine the request for the allocation of the funds, i.e. move that we support the request.
Is there a second, councillor Toomey?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to second councillor Williams. Yes, Mr Mayor, I'm happy to to second councillor Williams.
I believe councillor Barry is taking this.
Yep, thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, this is yet another unpalatable report, which will affect most vulnerable in our society yet again. It's probably apt that we discuss it on the day that next year's budget has been announced. Mr Mayor, previously, Welsh Government has provided a grant for the national scheme to assist pensioners with council tax payments. That grant has now been included in our revenue support grant. That was actually decreased by one point nine million pounds, plus the nearly a hundred thousand pound grant we received, so in effect, we're two million pounds worse off to provide the same support for these pensioners. Last year, pensioners within receipt of partial council tax reduction received up to a maximum of one hundred pounds, and the grant was being tested. And last year, nine hundred and eighty six pensioners received its help. Is the number of persons to be considered, proposed for consideration, Mr Mayor? When is it continued the scheme as in previous years, but to remove completely for next year? And that will be at the cost to the authority of eighty eight thousand pounds for this year? To continue the scheme for this year only up to a maximum of fifty pounds, and to remove the scheme next year? And again, that will cost us forty four thousand pounds this year? Or to discontinue the scheme immediately? Mr Mayor, it makes no difference to our vote, but approximately twelve other local authorities have been going through the same discussion, and at least ten of them have decided that they will be ceasing the payment from next year. The costs of the scheme are non-budgeted and will be financed through either of or a combination of potential underspend on budgeted council tax reduction scheme and efficiencies reserve. So, Mayor, I'd like now to move recommendation six point one, the Pensioner Grant continues for twenty fourteen fifteen, but reduces to a maximum of fifty pounds, be approved. A qualifying date of meeting eligibility criteria of first November twenty fourteen be approved. And I'd like to change recommendation three to say a report be presented next year on Help for Pensioners Scheme twenty fifteen, for us to consider them.
Is there a second up? So, any questions?
Sorry, Mr Mayor, I was writing, and did I understand that six three is we will reconsider, not discontinue at this time? Yes? Thank you.
Any other questions? Any comments? Councillor Thomas?
I made the point in the last council, Mr Mayor, that we are the eighth richest country in the world, and I know that has no bearing on this council, we're not the eighth richest council in the world. I just find it a great shame that we are moving towards a period where we're almost moving back to Dickensian times, in terms of looking after the most vulnerable aged people in our population. It's not going to affect the vote. Personally, I will vote against this this report tonight for that reason. I'm sure that my colleagues on the front bench will have a good answer to my comment, but it's just a shame to me that we are actually removing facilities for vulnerable people hand over fist in this country.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. For once, I don't disagree with councillor Richard Thomas on this one. Again, as I've said previously in this chamber, we are now faced with extremely difficult decisions that we have to make, and none of us, when we were elected, wanted to face this sort of decision that we're having to face now. There's a lot more that's going to be facing us, because as announced today, our provisional settlement sees a reduction, you know, settlement of two point six percent. That is a huge percentage reduction. We currently have to find nine hundred thousand pounds for twenty fifteen sixteen, and that's now gone up to just over two million pounds. It's a great ask. We're going to have to cut in all areas, unfortunately, and what I'm proud is that we, in this authority, and like perhaps some authorities, have said that we can't take it away from the the full amount away from the nine hundred or so pensioners who are earning this. And that's why we've asked for a further report next year, because we, as the Labour Group, do not want to see our most vulnerable elderly people suffering, and we will do all we can. We can't make promises at this stage, but we will do all we can to see if we can continue at least a fifty percent support to the the old age. As I say, it's not something that we take lightly, and as Chris has said already, it's something that we certainly as a Labour Group cannot run away from. It's a hard decision, but essentially, we have to look at all areas.
Councillor Jones?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. It's perhaps the Dickensian times in the austerity times that we find ourselves. I think that the problem there can be laid at the doors of the present Prime Minister and the Deputy Prime Minister, and hopefully, the electorate in the United Kingdom will find them wanting in May next year.
Councillor Jones?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Could I ask a question in terms of the figures that were predicated prior to this announcement today of the actual percentage cut? And are the figures?
Sorry, we had gone past questions. We had questions previously.
Any other comments? Right, the recommendations is on page ninety seven. Recommendation six, six one, six two, six three with the amendment. Ask you all to vote now, please. That's that's carried. Item number twenty, I believe the leader got something to say on this.
Yes, Mr Mayor, I'm happy to say it. This report has been deferred until, Mr Mayor, the report has been deferred to a future meeting.
Right, we go to item number, item twenty one. To deal with urgent business, our correspondent, I believe the leader wants to say two items.
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, members of council will be aware that the Wales Audit Office undertook a corporate assessment of the authority two weeks ago, and I just wanted to update members as to the initial feedback from that assessment. Mr Mayor, the initial feedback was very positive, and as leader, I'm completely satisfied that the council has given a very good account of itself. And I would like to thank all members of staff for everything they have done in the preparation for the assessment. There was a tremendous amount of work put in by many, many members of staff. I'm not going to name them because I'm bound to miss some out, and I don't want to offend them. They did a tremendous amount of work for this. And also the the councillors for their contributions during the week of the assessment. I'd like to thank members of the opposition, also, Mr Mayor, and in particular, the leader and the deputy leader of the opposition for their very positive contributions during the process, and I'm grateful for your your contributions, both of you. And the other item, Mr Mayor, was the Esten Monitoring Visit of this week, which concluded today. The inspectors, as most members will be aware, focused on recommendations three and recommendation seven, which is the Neets and the Youth Support Services Recommendations. And again, initial feedback from the inspection team was quite positive, and again, I would like to thank all members of the council and staff who have worked so hard preparing for that visit. Tremendous amount of work, again, goes into every monitoring visit. And I'd also obviously like to thank the members of the recovery board for their continued support on our journey of educational improvement.
Right. I thank you for that, leader. Item twenty two, to receive communication from his worshiped mayor. I have none, so I wish you, thank you very much for attending, and a safe journey home.